All right, good evening, everyone. Again, we will call this one of the city council meeting. Here on the great hall, Tuesday, April 18th. Madam President, you will call the roll.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor LaFard.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members of the board.
Thank you very much, Madam President. You all stand and join me in moment silence for those serving here and abroad in our military, as well as their families. And please turn and face the flag. Join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam President, do you agree the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting during the meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by the present, and that need to be acknowledged and discussed.
Thank you, Madam President. And the top of our agenda is honoring of Quincy College, and for this, I will turn it over to Counselor DeBona. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. It gives me great honor to be giving this commendation to Quincy College and President Peter Separes for offering four-year baccalaureate degrees. I'm going to start off by saying, you know, on the personal side, I'm a former alumni of Quincy College, working as a small business owner. I was able to do night school, summer/winter session classes at Quincy College some fifteen years ago. I eventually earned my associate's degree in business management, business administration with a concentration in management. I eventually went on to UMass Boston and earned a bachelor's degree. I'm very grateful that Quincy College gave you that opportunity. You know, founded in 1958, Quincy College is coming up on sixty years of serving, four-hundred, four-five-hundred students with the main campus in Quincy right across the street, as well as Plymouth. Peter Separes has now been president for sixty years, taking over in January of 2011, and done a fantastic job at that college. On Friday, January 13th of 2017, Governor Baker signed into law Chapter 442 of the Acts of 2016, a bill that allowed Quincy College the ability to confer a four-year baccalaureate degree, that's always a tough word, in addition to associate's degrees and certificates. With that being said, there's a lot of people in here tonight that are staff, board members as well. I'm going to read the, what the Quincy City Council is going to do, and I'm going to motion you guys up to come on up, as well as Peter Separes. We have some behind us, Bill Hall, former Ward 1 City Council, Brett Hannity, who is now Plymouth County Commissioner, as well as Chris Bell, and a big group of Quincy College people here. I always go back to also professor, who is not here tonight, is former Mayor Jim Sheets, which allowed me to come into his classroom last year and teach a class about our public service, which I'm very, very grateful, there's some students in the back here as well. In recognition and congratulations to Quincy College on a four-year bachelor degree program, since its inception, Quincy College has continued its mission to give access to an affordable higher education that prepares their students to enter the workforce. By offering four-year degrees, they continue to enhance their mission and meet the challenging needs of the community. Congratulations, Quincy College, on this momentous event in the history of the college. We wish you continued success. This is signed by the City Council, and you could come forward, President Peter Separes, and accept this. And if you have a few words you'd like to say, thank goodness. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, members of the City Council. It's truly my pleasure to be here this evening to represent Quincy College. For those of you on the council who have not been at, who do not know personally, which at this point, as I look around the room, I think there's only Counselor Harris, my name is Peter Separes, and I've had the honor and privilege of being president of Quincy College at this exciting time in its history. I have to say at the outset that I'm continuously amazed at the reservoir of goodwill that Quincy College has built up in the community. This is especially true for those of you who are here tonight, as well as cast members of the City Council, and for Mayor Koch, all of whom have been unfailingly supportive not only of our two recent home rule petitions, but on a variety of issues day in and day out. Additionally, I think it's important to mention both our entire legislative delegation, particularly Senator John F. Keenan, the House Majority Leader, Ron Mariano, as well as Representative Esther Chan, for their unwavering support of Quincy College as our home rule petitions have worked their way through the legislature, and gone from this chamber through the legislative process of being enacted into law, one by Governor DeValle-Caprio, one by Governor Baker. I'd also like to mention, since the date tonight, three of the members of my board, Governor Bowles here, Governor Haley's here, as you mentioned, and Governor David McCarthy is here as well. Much like a crew team rowing on the Charles River, you can see at Quincy College the effect of what happens when everyone is on the same page and working toward common goal. Despite the fact that we're not funded by the city or the state, and I'm not complaining, I'm not looking for any money. It seems like we've been riding a way of good fortune lately. I like to say sometimes that we're like the little engine that could, and we're succeeding in doing things that are counterintuitive to what's happening in higher education today. We're experiencing, as I think you know, unprecedented growth. Counselor DeBona mentioned our recent outstanding news. On Friday, January 13th, Governor Baker signed into law Chapter 442, a bill that allows Quincy College to offer baccalaureate degrees in addition to those currently awarded associate degrees and certificates. In addition to this news, I think you all know that we're working almost on a daily basis with Mayor Koch and the administration to secure the funding and a location for building in Quincy Center that will become, hopefully, our permanent home. These bricks and mortar improvements are not the only good things that are happening in the college. We've recently been recognized in a variety of ways. We've been recognized as being a best college to work for in the United States of America by the Chronicle of Higher Education. We've been recognized as a best college for head of alunis by the Washington Monthly Magazine, which is out of Washington, D.C. We've been recognized as a best return on investment by onlinecollegeplan.com. We are a military-friendly institution for six straight years in a row, and not least for our students and graduates, we'll rank number one in salaries after attending for the second year in a row. And just this past weekend, we received the gold award for the best website for colleges under seven thousand students by the Higher Education Marketing Board. Quincy College's recent rankings and designations highlight the successful outcomes of our students, our aggressive emphasis on teaching and learning, and reflects the understanding of the value beyond the classroom for all learners regardless of age. We continue to innovate and build, not only our physical spaces, but our education as well. While I accept this accolade this evening, my standing here before you is really emblematic of the efforts which are put in every day by our faculty and staff. At Quincy College, we've reoriented our entire institution to be focused on student-centered learning and the primacy of the teaching and relationship. We are proud to partner with the city of Quincy and the Quincy schools and to provide a local pathway for students in our community. It is my firm belief, and something I've sensed as I became president, that education is the passport that allows one to travel through and navigate our society. I am very proud to say that our graduates operate their passport. It is our student, staff, and faculty, as well as our administrators and board, working together with the city of Quincy and our colleagues up and down the Route 3 corridor, as one large community that has ensured that Quincy College now, more than ever, is an institution that is on the move. In closing, I am humbled by this recognition tonight. Thank you for your time and patience, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. We'll take a two-minute recess for a picture in the well, so if the ward governors want to come up. All right, let's use the floor as the line.
That's still not fair.
Madam President, you will read out the first amendment.
I don't know. Yes, number one of the amendment, 2017-058, incorporating $250,000 to community preservation fund for forward playroom.
Counselor Paul.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly move a rule on this. I see the park director out there, I don't get it from him. If you don't, that's perfectly fine, but I just wanted to follow up with a discussion minute here that our last meeting regarding the park improvements plan. And I want to thank the Community Preservation Committee for our recognizing the sense of urgency around this project. I won't reiterate it, but we all sat here and listened to it, so I'm grateful for their work in approving this, and also Chris for helping to facilitate it. So with that, I move a rule. Thank you.
Motion to approve by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor DeVron. On the motion, Counselor DeVron.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to elaborate just a little bit during our Community Preservation Committee, being the board member here from the council, that it's been a very difficult year with funding, that more communities and more municipalities have come on board with the CPA funding, and it's put us in a real pickle over there at the community preservation. But with the work and help of the mayor administration, as well as Mayor Koch, to move this item forward, the money got a little bit tied up at the state level, and people don't really truly understand that, and they just want to park out there, and they want these improvements. But with this being approved tonight, I ask my colleagues to be on board with allowing this appropriate funding to get started back over there. The baseball season's already started for the kids, and they still need a little bit of work with the actual diamond and the field, and the Play For All playground, which is all-inclusive, is a very important vital piece to the city of Quincy. So written that, I second this, but I want to urge my colleagues to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona, for the discussion. Counselor Pallo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is the first time this being on the agenda.
Yes.
Right, so can someone speak to where it's coming from, where it's going? I understand the merits of the project, and we heard a lot about it, actually, I think it was the last council meeting, and folks came up and spoke, and it's probably worth thanking all of those folks who came up and spoke, came out and supported this project, came out and spoke, and they're concerned that it wasn't in the capital improvement request, the parks budget request. They came out, they advocated, and without them, I'd have, you know, question whether or not this is financial or they're paid. But in terms of the flow of the monies, can someone speak to that perhaps?
Yes, the mayor's representative is welcome. It's welcome.
Through you, Madam President. Flow of the monies is not that different than most other CPC projects. The difference here, Counselor, is that we asked the CPC to make the recommendation on this project at its last meeting, and send it up to the mayor's office for appropriation and approval by this body prior to the remaining group of projects that are still being liberated by the CPC. Generally, what happens is the projects come in a group. It's usually one appropriation, maybe two appropriations a year, depending on the time of things. In this particular case, based on the urgency, based on some of the issues surrounding it, we felt it was appropriate to ask the CPC to send up the recommendation a little bit earlier than we normally would, just to get the ball rolling.
Okay, thank you. That explains why it's a standalone idea, which was one of my questions. And the second is usually when we get that request, somebody tells us how many monies in the account, how the account's being allocated, and generally, it's a different order of monies, that the money can go into. Can you speak to that?
I believe the auditor can speak to that, Madam Auditor.
It'd be so much more entertaining if Mr. Walker. Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Yes, Counselor. Generally speaking, that in the fall, around, I think it's November or December, at that time, the council will vote on a budget, and that's when the money goes into the appropriate allocated spaces. This money was put into the budgetary reserve account. Currently, there's $866,000 in that account, so the money will get transferred out of this reserve account, and it will go into the recreational account to cover the cost of the playground.
Okay, thank you. And to whoever wants the answer. So that means, it's $866, it's $250,000, that means this is a little less than a third that would then preclude certain projects who get funded at the CPA, or Mr. Walker, perhaps to you, or actually, perhaps to our representative, Counselor Paul, who serves in that. There are other projects that haven't been voted on, I suspect, this evening. Whoever wants the answer, I'm trying. Long it out.
I don't know who, Madam Auditor.
Speak to the volume, too.
Through you to Mr. Palmucci. We're a little bit of a pickle this year. We're $1.3 million in the hole, and the reason being is a lot more projects have come onto the table. We're piecemealing this situation, where we're actually telling some bodies that are coming forward, some groups, that we might not be able to fund it this year, we might have to come back next year, and some of them might not be top priority. We're trying to, with the help of the administration, is trying to work something out with, you know, the buckets and what you would say. In general, this allocation, this $250,000, was basically a shortfall from the state. And as you can see from the past meeting, and people who came in here, and they don't fully under, that's the thing about this, people don't fully understand that are citizens of the city, how funding works, how where the state funding is lost, and there's already a project underway over there in the forward improvements. And so, we're putting in a position where we want to make sure that the forward field improvements are, one of the, one in which privately funded, a privately fundraiser was held, to do the park improvements for the Play For All all-inclusive. Now, this Play For All all-inclusive, and people don't fully understand this, is something that is for kids, not only that are handicapped, but also have other needs, like wishes, autism, and other behavioral issues. So this kind of goes beyond what we really need for the city of Quincy. These kids, they, we don't have anything that has this in the city of Quincy. You can go to brain tree, and they have these type of facilities, but this is that one item that people came and front here and asked about, and why the funding wasn't there. They don't fully understand, and I want to thank the administration for moving this forward early, because if it gets passed tonight, that it's an important matter, and we don't want, and the baseball field, the baseball diamond, the season's already started, and the kids can't fully use that side, because they push the diamond from the back end, where the Ray Gun Field backstop is, to the other side. So we're basically in the middle, the money got tied up, and we want to move this forward a little bit earlier than the other ones. This is kind of the top priority. So with the motion of Connie Driscoll from the Community Preservation Committee, I second this, to move this up to the council, and to probably free this up, and as a funding, you'd have to ask the administration how that's going to work, but this is one of the most important items in that asking. So with that being said, back through you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Certainly, I don't dispute the merits of the particular project, it just, usually when these are done, when we're funding CPA projects, we see the whole, the whole kind of assembly of projects that are being funded, and you can see in a more wider, wider lens, the affordable housing projects, the open space preservation, we can see what the CPA is doing. When a project comes to us piecemeal, and I understand why this is being done, I don't have an issue with that at all, when we only see one project, we can't see how the CPA funds are being expended, and which different aspects that the fund that was established, the trust fund was established to support is being funded, I guess. So I just, it's a little confusing to me, how it's being done, but I'm happy to support it nevertheless, because it's a good project. But through you to Mr. Walker, I see Mr. Walker wants to add something.
Did you want?
Yeah, just a quick point, Madam President, that the only thing different here is the timing, Counselor. This was a project, the sense of the committee, prior to last week, was this was going to be one of the priority projects regardless proposed from the park department. This was going to make it into the pipeline for appropriation to this body through the mayor. And the only difference now being is that it got moved up and separated from the pack, so to speak, so we could get the ball rolling a little bit quicker than we would have otherwise. You'll be seeing those projects, I would think, within the next meeting or two. I don't know that, you know, we're going to be in a position to not appropriate a certain number of projects. I think that there's some avenues that the mayor's team and the CPC are working on together to make sure all the appropriate projects will be before this body with appropriation request. Of course, every time there's an application, doesn't mean the CPC is going to recommend it. There are some projects that, for a number of reasons, get knocked off by, or get rejected by the committee, whether they don't fit the application criteria, whether they're city projects, guise, that's a community project, or...
Guys?
Guys, and, or a variety of other reasons that can happen. So the amount of money in the account right now isn't necessarily predictive of, you know, the full scope of things. We think that this project is going to be at the top of the list to begin with, and the only issue here is the talent.
No, again, I'm not disputing the reasons why it's being brought up. It's unusual that a project is brought up individually, but we can't look at the whole host of projects and projects, projects and properties sometimes at a given point. Nevertheless, if that's my question, I appreciate it, and happy to support this, obviously. It's a meaningful project, it has a lot to focus on the community, who will be able to take their kids to a playground that is inclusive. We don't have one, so it's a music vote, I think. So thank you. Forward, Counselor Paul, I'm looking out for the monitor and done on this, and to the administration as well.
Thank you. Madam President, and I probably should have just painted a little more perspective to the best of my understanding, but my understanding was this was an unanticipated item taken out of sequence. As someone who represents the Quincy Point area and is intimately familiar with the evolution in that point's lack thereof, of this particular project, you know, there was a piece of funding that sort of went, went by the wayside. So I know you can appreciate this, but you know, as a ward council, what I've been dealing with is essentially a half-completed project, right? So I'm hearing from residents, and we're just talking about the baseball diamond, right? Because now we're starting to get into baseball season. So the way that this whole concept evolved, quite honestly, was out of the residential sentiment of folks living on Beechwood Street area, and were dealing with follow balls, you know, hitting their vehicles, their vinyl siding, and you name it, what's happening, right? And that's what happened to be able to buy a baseball field. So the thought was to sort of re-engineer everything, and replace the baseball diamond, and then out of that grew what I believe to be an amazing project, courtesy of the playground, right, that would essentially service the needs of children that, you know, are either confined to mobility devices, or have seeing impairments, or, you know, some of the other issues that Counselor DeBona had alluded to. But it all started with this baseball diamond. So if you were down in the Quincy Point area now, essentially, you would see a half-completed revitalization, reconstruction of the baseball diamond, with mounds of dirt just sitting there. So as we get back to why maybe this is on the agenda, obviously, it was an unanticipated circumstance, but as I see it, and again, I'm an advocate, I've been involved with this project day one, I appreciate everyone's willingness to kind of move the chains, move the ball forward on this, but I mean, construction is well underway. And, you know, getting back to sort of the need for the community, and I heard everybody stress the sentiment here this evening, like, there were so many hands that touched this project to really, to really bring it to fruition. I mean, we had the opportunity, you know, together, to raise over $30,000 a night, and I know some folks in this room, in, you know, the front of this room that night, and that's a pretty special thing, you know? So we're trying to keep a really positive, upbeat, you know, great story, not only for Quincy Point, for Ward 2, but the city at large, and just complete, right? We had a circumstance that we couldn't see happening, it happened, and what I see before me here is, you know, some, hopefully something that will expedite the request, and, you know, complete all the work orders, and hopefully we'll have kids playing on that playground, you know, soon and later. At the end of the day, I mean, that's, for me, I mean, that's what it's all about. So I appreciate your indulgence, Madam President, and I already stated my motion, so thank you.
Thank you. So we will ask the clerk for a vote to call the... Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Paul.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFard.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members. Next, Senator DeBona.
Number two on the agenda, 2017-055, order home rule petition, amended Chapter 64, Section 3A of the Local Act of 2001, an act authorizing emotional way of the reading by Counselor King. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam President. So this, this is kind of a fun little little project. So we're talking a little bit about the hotel motel tax over the past few weeks, especially vis-à-vis parks, right? So what this would do, this home rule petition, is add a few words to an existing authorization that allows Quincy to spend hotel motel tax. that allows Quincy to spend hotel motel tax for, for certain reasons, which currently include open space conservation, construction of parks, recreation areas, beaches, seawalls, wetland restoration, ecological areas. And Counselor Crull and I want to add some words that would include the reconstruction, maintenance, and construction of streets and sidewalks in neighborhood outside of the urban renewal district. Just given that, you know, we said here most decisions we make are about spending money, and obviously, money just doesn't grow on trees, so you have to be creative about where you're receiving money and how you're spending it. So, what this represents to me is the past. We just went through my first budget cycle where we raised taxes on the residents of the city. This represents priorities. What I've been looking for since I, since I was so fortunate to join this body is an identification of spending priorities, why we're spending money on certain things, how those monies are allocated, you know, innovative and smart resources of funds, whether it's of the state, or the federal government, or public-private partnerships. This has to do with a twenty-seven million dollar park bond that we've been presented with recently, this has to do with a twenty-five million dollar capital improvement plan that we'll soon see, this has to do with sixty million dollar parking garage that's coming down the line, and generally, it just has to do with the future, and having some foresight and some vision into how we can use non-real or personal property tax dollars to leverage improvements within the city. The most widely shared concern that I see from constituents is that streets and sidewalks are in disrepair, their neighborhood streets, their main streets and arteries, and that money does not come easily. I was hoping to come with some more numbers tonight, so I could do a little compare and contrast of the spending that we've, as a city, have made over the past decade or so on streets and sidewalks and parks, so, you know, I can just highlight a little bit of what I've been able to discover in that regard. For streets and sidewalk repair, for the most part, that money comes from the state, where we're allocated money through what's called Chapter ninety. On average, we're probably receiving about two million dollars per year, which my understanding is that that covers maybe four streets. Just to give you an idea, I remember during a meeting we had, we got an idea that the Swan Causeway, which was repaid at some point in time, cost, I think, over two million dollars. So, over the last decade, we received just over eighteen million in state money, and then somewhere between there, we've often had that money with two bonds that have total about ten million dollars, so we're looking at almost thirty, we'll say twenty-nine. So, we've allocated about twenty-nine million dollars, ten of which has been fronted by the, by the taxpayers of the city and their property, covering the debt service on those, on those bonds. But twenty-nine million dollars for a hundred miles of road in the city is just, is just not enough. But in comparison, for the, for the amount of information I've been given on park improvements alone, on the teal field improvement we spent, or at least we've been on the hook for, almost fifteen million dollars. Now, in this park improvement bond, that has nothing to do with this improvement that we're trying to make to this ordinance and law here, we're looking for another sixteen million to improve a small parcel of land. Now, that is more than half of the thirty million I referenced, that would cover a hundred miles of road in the city for a small parcel of land outside of city hall. Now, I fundamentally understand that that is an important piece of our history, it's trying to improve and to improve our caliber as a city. I do look at that as a more of a capstone project, and as I said during our last meeting, that, you know, we should be looking for more clever and alternative, innovative, and smart financing methods. Sixteen million dollars can go a long way in the entire city. So, this is an easy solution. It's a guideline, it's a suggestion. What it's doing is saying that, hey, we can also use this money that comes in from our guests that use our hotels, and we can leverage non-personal property dollars to do that. And I hope my colleagues will support me tonight. I know that we've seen in the hotel motel tax over the past ten years plus, almost fifteen million dollars has come in, and we had a significant bump from two thousand ten to two thousand eleven, we almost doubled, and that's probably because of the Marriott Hotel. Since then, we've had refurbishments of the Adams Inn, refurbishments of the Hojos, Nova Suites, we have a hundred and eighty rooms coming in North Quincy, and, you know, we'll hope for more, because that's great revenue that can be leveraged and not have to be on the back of the taxpayer, right? Infrastructure is the most costly thing that we've got going on here, and it's vital to our improvements that we're making across the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. So, we will move to, okay, let's, yes, Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It is, you know, glad to stand with Counselor King on this, and, you know, just kind of offer, you know, much to his sentiment already, an alternative to an already great revenue source. I mean, the way that I sort of view things, and maybe more from an analytical standpoint, but, you know, the situation, quite honestly, is, you know, we're talking about our magnates of two hundred and forty-seven miles of roadway and three hundred and twenty miles of sidewalk. That's, that's a lot of asphalt, right? And as Counselor King had alluded to, you know, the variables are always funny. So, you get, you know, a somewhat static amount in Chapter ninety money or state money every single year to, to basically take to the spire and you can go. And then the options that have been presented in the past would be actually put a line item in the budget, or put forward another bond, though, right? So, either one of these approaches would help us to, you know, address the, the condition of, you know, the plodable roads that are out there. However, the issue with that approach is that they're taxpayer funded. So, by putting forth an amendment or an enhancement, like I said, to an already creative revenue source, essentially what you're doing is allowing, you know, the opportunity to use a portion or a percentage, depending on how you wrote it, be used towards rehabilitating roads, sidewalks, and potentially even waterways. You know, this proposal, in my mind, was never too eliminated, or even downplayed the importance of investing in, in parks or open spaces. It was never the intention. It actually, in my mind, is quite the opposite. It was intended to be viewed as a creative, out-of-the-box solution to address a major infrastructure issue that we face as a city on a daily basis, really, by maximizing a non-taxpayer revenue source. So, I do believe, you know, that in government, it is my responsibility to look at the proposal placed in front of me as an opportunity, really, to ask questions and float ideas with the hope of, you know, making things better. Because, you know, at the end of the day, I think we'd all agree with this, you know, nobody, I mean, nobody has a market corner on good ideas. So, that was the intention with this, you know, we've been fortunate enough as, as a body, as a city, to, you know, consistently invest in, in our parks, in our open spaces, you know, through hotel motel tax, through another evolving funding source, as we just spoke about, community preservation committee. And, you know, kind of thinking through this, this case study, our roads need help. I've been sponsoring resolutions up there for three, four, you know, fill-in line number years, all the line that I'm here, and many, many of those around the well have been on with, but it always comes down to money, right? So, if you don't have the proper resources allocated, you can never, you know, deliver on the actual needs. So, I'm always viewing things from a perspective of how do we put ourselves in the best position possible and mitigate, you know, the needs of the taxpayer? And by amending, like I said, a percentage of the hotel motel tax, I think we take a very creative and exciting revenue source and have the potential to make an impact. So, thank you, Madam President, and I'll be supportive.
Thank you. So, this will be referred to ordinance, and it will be advertised. It's going to get here, we're going to committee. It's going to go to committee.
Going to board?
Yes, Counselor King.
A number of councils, I think, are looking to be recognized, can't be recognized in this motion.
One, one second, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, this is, this is an important order putting forward by Counselor King and Counselor Crull. I think I just want to elaborate a little bit on the hotel motel tax and proposal of twenty-seven million that's being done by the mayor, that I share his vision, I really do, I share that vision of the parks, and, you know, being a former park and recreation board member in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and then coming on to the council now as well as being on the school committee, that is really important, vital part of the city. I've played on many of these playgrounds as a kid, being involved in the sports, Babe Ruth Baseball, you know, Quincy Police, Marsete Legion, Quincy High School, playing on Adams Field, I played over a hundred games on that field, and it's, it's been moved over, Veterans Memorial Stadium, played over fifty games, being with the Quincy Point Panthers as a child, being with Quincy High School as well. So, I've, I've used a lot of these parks, and I share the vision of how we move the city forward. With that being said, when we impose this amendment, Chapter sixty-four, section three A of the Acts of two thousand one, we did not have a new variable out there, and that variable is the downtown development. We did not have as many vehicles on the road as we do now. So, to kind of put it into perspective, my top three complaints that I personally get as a ward, as an at-large council member is taxes, traffic, and roads. Those are my three main ingredients that I continuously get on a continuous basis. Now, I will have to say to the administration, you're doing a fantastic job on the sidewalks. It's a little bit different animal than the roads, because the sidewalks, you could have thirty streets, I mean, thirty houses on a street, but you only have to repair maybe two of them, and I've been seeing mixing and matching on each street, and you're doing a fantastic job. But that's a lower allocation of funding, where these roads are continuously being beat up during the winter season, and there's only so much Chapter ninety money that we're getting, it's like one point nine, two million dollars that we got, and that goes pretty fast out there. So, we need more funding for the roads, and we have to figure out what we do as a council, as a municipality, how we move that forward. And being creative, I have to, I have to give Counselor King and Counselor Crull some props on this, because if you're able to use seawalls in the equation, and it's infrastructure improvements, why can't you use roads and sidewalks? So, you know, I, I'm going to support this with these guys, I know it's going to be moved, but I wanted to speak about it tonight, and I share the vision of the parks and moving the city forward. We also have to make sure we're mitigating the traffic slash road situation that's happening in the city. I'm all for the redevelopment of the city, I'm all for it, but we have to do something on the outskirts. The people that are living here are looking to us, saying, what are you doing up there as a council, or what are you doing as a city to mitigate the situation with the roads? Now, I've had a few calls with potholes and stuff like that, and we're in a session where we're going to be doing more, you know, pothole repairs, you know, pothole hotline, but I've been getting calls about that. So, this is to try to, this is a solution-based order that they're moving forward with this home room petition. We're, we're trying to strike the balance of our parks and moving the city forward, but also happening through the roads. So, I'm going to be in support of this, whether it goes to committee or have a public hearing on this, but I want to thank you guys, and I hope I support it with you, Counselor King and Counselor Crull. Thank you.
Counselor Finn?
I'm fine, Madam President. I just, uh...
I'm sorry, I thought we wanted to be recognized earlier.
I do, I trust we're going to vote whether or not this goes to committee or the mayor.
Yes, at some point. Thank you. Counselor Phil, let's see.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam President. I agree with Counselor DeBona, LPC should be paid to repay the roads. Uh, no, I commend Counselor King, and, uh, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. I commend you guys for coming up with a novel idea, a new approach to, to an old problem, and differ a little bit with Counselor DeBona, that ninety percent of the calls that I get as a ward council are about traffic, overdevelopment, roads, maybe that's because of my voting record, but, um, those are the three, and I think those all need to be addressed, traffic and roads going in and out. But, you know, some of our roads rival those in third world countries. Paving needs to be more of a priority for the city government, I think. I'd support spending a lot more money than what we currently do. If, and currently, I don't think we're doing enough, frankly, we're not keeping up with, with the way in which the roads are falling apart, other than downtown, which I think frustrates a lot of folks who live in, on streets, that their road has been in need of repair for many years, if not decades. You know, if we don't fix our roads, people won't be able to get to their hotels, residents won't be able to get home, get to work. I don't care whose money it is, which pocket of money this is coming from, funding for these things, it's also important. I don't, I also think it'd be a great idea if we amended this to say that the money from the hotels that are in each ward go back to the ward for payment. Having the Marriott, whatever, if it do okay, the forests be in trouble.
And breakfast.
Yeah. Airbnb, maybe, maybe that part. But no, and I would just ask, to be honest, I'm, I'm not sure why we're just referring this to committee, why wouldn't we just hold on this tonight? I mean, I'd be fine, but what do we need a hearing on? I mean, this is, to me, it's no brain, we're just going on this thing. Get it up to the legislature, get this thing moving. But that's, I just throw that out. I don't think you have to have, it's, it's essentially a glorified resolution. It's a glorified resolution, we're asking the legislature to do something, we're not, it's not an order from this body, it's essentially a resolution. So, I don't think it needs to be advertised or proposed, it needs to be held, everybody will agree. I defer to the clerk.
It's Counselor King and Counselor Crull, so going to defer to that, would you defer to have a...
Yeah. For the first, seems better.
All right. Uh, so, is there a motion to...
Motion to draw.
Draw that motion.
Draw the motion to go to committee, so, and, actually, no, we're going to make a motion to pass Order two thousand seventeen, motion to approve by Counselor King and seconded by Counselor Crull. Further discussion on motion? Yes, Counselor Harris.
To the mayor's spokesperson, that's the mayor's intention.
Mr. Vaughn?
Through you, Madam President, thank you, thank you, Counselor. I think the settlement is one that is entirely agreed upon by the man, I think it's something that he's talked about individually and collectively, with this group of need to spend more money on our roads. We are making progress, we are doing a lot out there, we're certainly, that does not mean that's not much more to do, it does not mean that we can't be doing a lot more. He has talked specifically toward some of the things that Counselor Crull has brought up in the last couple of years, about using some of our free cash allocation, perhaps even within the budget, setting aside a specific amount of money for, to, and he's mentioned it before, the bond completion of the debt service paying off snow removal in two thousand fifteen, and that would be, his intention is to pump that money into the roads. That, that being said, the, the mayor comes from a time where funding for parks was somewhere between nonexistent and very difficult to fund. He remembers very well the intention behind the passage of this original law was to find a funding source outside of property sector that could fund these major capital groups for our parks. We have, by most accounts, one of the best park systems in the state, and that is largely because we've had a funding source outside of the regular budget, outside of our bond capacity, that's been able to approve and pay for a number of these projects over the last fifteen to twenty years. It is not the best intention at this point to change that, although the two, the two positions I don't think are mutually exclusive, I do believe, we need to have additional road funding, but at the same time, we do not want to do anything that undercuts the spirit and intention for the original passage of the hotel motel law, hotel motel tax law in the city. So, with that understanding, he is not going to sign any special legislation, any home petition that makes its way to his desk. Essentially, that means that it would not go to the legislature.
So, just for a point of clarification, the clerk wants to address actually the passing of this this evening, where it was when we referred to ordinance committee, so, Madam Clark, I believe has an update regarding whether it can be actually passed this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I prefer the review. I believe it does have to go to ordinance committee, to be advertised and have a public hearing. So, for that, I would like to ask that you refer to the committee, and we'll vote for the advertising in public hearing, and that way we can ask for other home petitions.
So, you want to renew your motion?
Yeah, I never again.
No, I need it, but that's okay.
So, motion, motion to put it to ordinance committee?
Yes.
That will call, and that vote is-
Thank you. So, motion to refer to ordinance, seconded by-
Seconded by Counsel.
Seconded by Counsel.
I mean, oh, sorry.
Seconded by Counsel Crowe.
On the motion?
On the motion. Well, Counsel Kane, I don't, because it says motion. Go ahead.
Was Counsel Harris finished, by the way?
He didn't say anything.
I have just, I just have questions on, that's, I have questions on this. I think it's great.
Hold on one second, one, one second, one second. Can you, can you just? Can you yield your time to Counsel Harris? Wait a minute, wait a minute.
He asked for the, for the mayor's opinion.
Right, I was, I thought I saw-
So, Counsel Harris.
So, my, my, my then, like, to either Counsel Kane and Counsel Crowe, I think it's a great, great concept to take the, get more money to the things that we need out of the property tax. I a hundred percent agree with that. But this doesn't spell out what percentage will go to streets, what percentage will go to parks, what percentage will go to, whether it's gonna be going to museums or our libraries, it doesn't, doesn't spell it out here. Wouldn't it be better to go to the ordinance committee and be able to figure it out instead of having it just so blanketed where there's no, we could have a year, or two, or three of not having our parks fixed, or not having our streets fixed. So, wouldn't there be more structure if we needed, rather than just throw it out, blanket it, that we're just gonna throw it out? Isn't that why we go to committee?
Has to go to committee.
Yeah.
You done?
I'm done.
Okay, all right, all right, Counsel Harris, Counsel Kane, if you want to respond?
Yes. I thank Counsel Harris for the question. I think as the law states, I'm not an attorney, there is no, there's nothing laid out for what is there, except for the fifteen percent to go to the tourism account. So, you know, as it seemingly said, it seems at the mayor's discretion, anyway. And just to address some comments from the mayor's representative, you know, the whole point of making this amendment is so as not to have to immediately put allocations in the budget, which would then be eaten by the taxpayer and cause their taxes to increase even more than they have over the past year, or however many years. You referenced coming from a time, that was sixteen years ago, and things changed. Not one person that sits around this well was on the council when this ordinance was put together, and a little renewed thinking, caution and foresight is what I think equals well. This isn't parks versus streets, this is providing a solution, as Counsel DeBona referenced, to, to a problem, and to a problem that wouldn't have to be, you know, the brunt of the burden felt by the taxpayer, that's, that's all that this is. And to say that, you know, the mayor wouldn't support this, which she has already openly advocated, you know, is unfortunate, it's very short sighted. So, you know, while we're about to take a vote, I do ask for my colleagues' support in this, just to go with the committee, and then we will have a discussion on it. You know, and I, I do hope that the mayor will come around, because I know this is something that will garner support.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else? Anyone else? No? No one else wishing to be heard? Okay, so, there's a motion to refer to committee by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel Crowe. On motion, Madam Carter, if you'll call.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Vaughn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
Counsel Delmoni.
No.
Question please.
Yes.
Okay, may I?